President Gonzalez, we are streaming.
Thank you, and welcome to the Special Board of Education meeting for November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. I call this meeting to order. I want to remind everyone speaking tonight that we do use the closed captioning function on YouTube, so please speak as clearly as possible. Dr. Albright, may I have a roll call, please?
Eberbele Vida.
I'm here.
Ronaldo Tomorito. Daniela Storga. Crystal Tapia Romero.
Here.
Courtney Jackson.
Here.
Josefina Dominguez.
Here.
Daniel Gonzalez.
Here. So our first agenda item for this evening is to consider adoption of the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five Special Board of Education Charter Schools Meeting Agenda. Is there a motion and second?
I move we adopt the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five Special Board of Education Charter Schools Meeting Agenda. This is Member Jackson.
This is Member Tapia Romero, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Eberbele Vida.
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito.
Yes.
Daniela Storga. Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez.
Yes. Our next item is public forum. Comments during public forum shall be limited to matters listed on this meeting's agenda. Board Vice President Jackson, will you please share the instructions for public forum?
So, welcome to our public forum guests. When you signed up to speak, you were asked to review the rules and expectations which our presiding officer will enforce. The New Mexico Open Meetings Act requires that our agendas specify in advance the items that will be discussed and voted on during the meeting. Therefore, public forum is not a dialogue among speakers and board members, but rather a chance to hear from our community. We will call participants to speak in the order they signed up, whether in person or virtual. Those here with us tonight will be asked to come to the microphone at the back of the room when your name is called. Online guests will stay in a virtual waiting room until it is their turn to speak. We have set aside forty-five minutes for public forum. If there are twenty-two or fewer speakers, you will each have two minutes to speak, otherwise you will have one minute. Tonight, we have eighteen speakers. So you will each have two minutes to speak. Once your time is up, you will be asked to quickly wrap up. If you feel unable to convey your message, you may email boarded@aps.edu. In addition, for those of you who are with us tonight, a representative from our service center is here to assist you. So with that, Mr. Gonzalez, will you call the first speaker?
Thank you, Board Member Jackson. And just so everyone knows, all the speakers are in person tonight. And our first speaker tonight is Chloe Lopez. And Chloe will be followed by Hawthorne Moore. And you'll have two minutes once you begin speaking. And there's a timer on the screen in front of you.
Hi, my name is Chloe Lopez. I'm an eighth grade student at Alice King Community School. There are multiple things I appreciate and value about Alice King Community School. I appreciate the teachers and staff for making Alice King such a welcoming environment. I appreciate the things I really enjoy about Alice King are the projects and learning style of the school. The things I I also enjoy how we can function as a four-day school week and still learn as much as a normal school, if not more. Another thing I appreciate is the multi-grade range Alice King offers. The wide range of grades makes it easier for parents and gives older kids opportunities to be responsible and show leadership to younger grade levels. As a middle schooler, Alice King has wide opportunities for me, like taking Algebra One for high school credit and academic competitions such as National History Day and Future City we can participate in. The variety of clubs, sports, and electives Alice King offers are unique as well. In closing, I'm asking that Alice King Community Schools Charter is renewed, so we may continue giving these students opportunities mentioned and continue to guide students with skills and education to be successful and productive members of the New Mexico community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hawthorne Moore, followed by Owen Wilkie. And you'll have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Thank you, Madam President, Members of the APS School Board and Superintendent Blakey for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about my school, New Mexico International School. I'm a New Mexico International School alumni who is currently at Sandia High School, and I hope to show you the impact NMIS has made in my high school experience. NMIS has thoroughly prepared me academically, specifically linguistically. Thus far, none of my classes have been ever so slightly challenging, and I also know of many other NMIS alumnis who maintain a four-point-five GPA. On top of that, NMIS has prepared me for extracurriculars by giving me the confidence to be able to try new things and accept failures. And the confidence to recognize my current capabilities. I'm currently in high school wrestling, and I have also tried many other sports and clubs. NMIS is a wonderful school of very committed teachers, and it's such a privilege to have those amazing teachers and mentors in my life. Our IB curriculum is very rigorous, but we're given so much support and help throughout our learning journey, so I ask that you renew our charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Owen Wilkie, followed by Idiario Harmio.
Thank you, Madam President, Members of the APS Board and Superintendent Bakely for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about my school, New Mexico International. Hello, hola, maravilla. I'm Owen Wilkie, a fifth grader at NMIS and the elected Student Council Vice President this year. I'm here to share what makes my school unique and why I love the education that I've received for the past six years. We're a language IB school, and I love how the IB attributes taught at my school influence the ways we interact with learning. These attributes give a framework that encourage curiosity, integrity, understanding, and expressing thoughts and ideas through multiple languages. The IB program at NMIS has taught me how to be open-minded, how to think, and also reflect by setting personal goals. It has also taught me how to serve in my community, and it has inspired me to take risks in my learning and taught me how to communicate in multiple languages. Las maestras en NMIS nos ayudan a compartir ideas y también nos inspiran para ser creativos y ser líderes. Y también ellas nos ayudan a pensar y resolver problemas internacionales. There is so much more I want to share about my amazing school, and this is why I'm here to ask the APS Board to renew our charter so more students like me can gain the skill needed to be successful learners and have a desire to make the world a better place. Thank you for your time. Adios, my salama.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I believe it's Idiario Armio, followed by Sienna Avery.
Good evening, Daniel Gonzalez and fellow board members. My name is Eladio Haredo Mio. I am a senior at RFK Charter School. I have been with RFK since my sixth grade year. My school journey has taken me from the quiet kid who would sit in the back of the class and not talk to many people to the kid who knows a majority of his classmates and speaks with them frequently. I attribute this to my two and a half years of being a teacher's aide, helping my peers with classwork, and being involved with community through experiences like the Guns to Gardens program and being part of the X Three internship and student design teams, as well as the classes like capstone, welding, culinary arts, and dual credit classes. In partnership with the teachers and staff at RFK, I feel prepared and motivated to begin the next chapter of my life by going to college to become a math or a history teacher. Thank you for your time and consideration in renewing RFK Charter High School.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sienna Avery, followed by Camilia Fine Diaz. You have two minutes once you start.
Hi, my name is Sienna Avery. I'm a seventh grade student at Alice King Community School. I love Alice King Community School because the staff and students are respectful and exceedingly welcoming. Students here at Alice King are taught to be leaders and venture out of our comfort zones to try new things. At Alice King, classes are multi-age, so we get to learn alongside students who are a year older or younger than us. This helps us grow as leaders and mentors while also learning from others with more experience. At AKCS, students' work is tailored to their skill level. This way, classwork is not unbearable but also not effortless. Lastly, I love that Alice King has after-school programs like cross-country, chess, a riding club, track and field, etc. These programs teach students what it is like to be in teams and specific communities. I respectfully request that you renew our charter because it is a wonderful learning environment and a safe place for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I believe it's Camilia Fine Diaz.
Thank you, Madam President, Members of the APS School Board and Superintendent Blakey for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about my school, New Mexico International School. Maravilla, hola, and hello. My name is Camila Fine Diaz, and I am here on behalf of NMIS. I am an eighth grader and the vice president-elect from the middle level. My school is unique in many ways. A great example is that it's multilingual, but it goes much deeper than that. We study new cultures and ideologies in depth, all while immersing ourselves in Spanish and Arabic. Our school encourages its students to learn about others' perspectives and cultures while propagating knowledge and creativity. We not only excel academically but also in many aspects of life due to the outstanding curriculum and teachers at our school. Nuestra escuela incorpora no solo los temas académicos sino también los atributos IB que nos ayudan a comprender el mundo y funcionar en la sociedad. Esto me ha ayudado a ser de más mente abierta a las perspectivas de otras personas y también conectar con muchas personas especialmente en Nuevo México donde muchos hablan español. Por los nueve años que he estado en esta escuela y he sido emersa en español, he aprendido tanto. Como pueden ver, ya puedo comunicarme fluentemente en dos idiomas. Esto me permite tener más oportunidades en mi vida cotidiana y expandir mis perspectivas. También puedo leer y escribir en las dos idiomas. These are only a few examples of how outstanding my school truly is. And I am so grateful for being able to be here today and share about the uniqueness of NMIS. Can I ask that you please renew our charter so many other students can receive the amazing opportunities I have had growing up? Thank you so much for your time. Goodbye, my salaman, y adios.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abigail Acosta, followed by Oscar Guzman. You have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Hello, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Blakey. My name is Abigail Acosta, and I am proud to be a graduate of Mark Armijo Academy's Class of Two thousand and twenty-five. As a smaller charter school, Mark Armijo offers a unique sense of connection between staff and students. The accessibility and support of our teachers allowed us to build meaningful relationships that guide us throughout our educational journeys. Mark Armijo has also provided me with countless opportunities that have shaped who I truly am today. One of the most impactful experiences was participating in the National Redesign Showcase in Washington, D.C., where we worked on projects that reflected the progress and growth of our schools. This experience strengthened our student voices and showed us the importance of including students and shaping their own education. During my time at Mark Armijo, I've experienced tremendous growth academically and personally. This school has truly helped me become the redder version of myself. Mark Armijo is more than just a school. It's a community that supports, engages, and empowers its students. Thank you to the guidance and care I've received here. I feel confident and prepared for the bright future ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Oscar Guzman, followed by Gino Harmio. And so you have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Hello, Madam Chair, Member of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Blakey. My name is Oscar Guzman, and I'm here to share my experience from Mark Armijo Academy, which has been incredible. At Mark Armijo, the teachers are constantly helping me monitor my grades attendance, so they don't slip. They have shown me how attendance directly impacts my academic success. Thanks to Mark Armijo Academy's schedule flexibility, it has provided many opportunities to take dual credit classes and begin any college credits. I had the chance to join the John Hawkins University redesign team, which has taught me leadership skills and helped me understand that my voice matters in my education. I was fortunate to travel to Washington, D.C., where I was able to share my ideas and on how we can use our local resources for success instead of relying on outside help. I'm truly grateful for Mark Armijo Academy. They truly feel like it's a gift to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gino Harmio, followed by Gabriela Oliate.
Hello, Madam President, Board members. I'm Gino Harmio, Eladio Harmio's dad. He's been going to RFK Charter School since sixth grade. He's done a broad array of different services that they have up to offer. He's done welding, he's done extracurricular activities like football, basketball, all the different things they ask him to help with other stuff to help the teachers learn as well. They also help on Thursdays to help the kids learn if they're behind and make sure they're ahead. It's just an amazing school. Everybody says that they're happy about being there because it's a smaller school, so they don't have to worry about everything, like all the overcrowding and everything. People have more abilities to learn with a smaller school. And so I really appreciate this opportunity, and thank you very much. I hope that you guys can renew their education.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriela. Thank you. You have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Blakey. Hola, buenas tardes. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Gabriela Alejandro Olide. I am a junior here at Health Leadership High School. I chose to come to Health Leadership because two of my sisters graduated from here. Before coming to this school, they struggled both with motivation and didn't feel excited about learning. But once they came to Health Leadership, everything changed. They found support, purpose, and opportunities that inspire them to keep going. Now they both really want to go to college. That motivated me to follow in their footsteps. Since joining, I've been part of Faces for the Future, a program that lets me explore my career interests by shadowing healthcare and professionals and observing surgeries. I've also joined Future Focus, which gave me a four-month internship here at UNMH Sports Medicine Clinic, where I shadow surgeries and worked as a medical assistant intern. These experiences have taught me so much about healthcare and inspired me to dream even bigger as a sixteen-year-old. I am now wanting to become a family medicine doctor so I can help my community even more. Health Leadership High School has shown me how important my community is and how much it needs me. Being bilingual allows me to connect with people by speaking my native language, which helps me communicate and care for them in more of a personal way. Every time I go out to serve, people think us for what we do, and that motivates me to keep going. When I graduate, I'll not just have my high school diploma. I'll have a dual credit in surgical technology from CNM and my CNA certification. I am proud to be part of Health Leadership High School. It's helped me grow not only as a student but as a future healthcare professional who's ready to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Sanchez.
Hello, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Blakey. My name is Daniela Sanchez Enriquez, and I am a junior at Health Leadership High School, and I want to share my experience being a student at Health Leadership. Before I went to Health Leadership, I went to a traditional middle school. I wasn't the best student. My grades were bad, and I didn't feel supported. I didn't feel motivated, and I felt like school just wasn't for me. Coming to Health Leadership has completely changed that. The teachers and staff really care about us. They take the time to make sure we understand our work, help us with their future careers, and guide us to believe in ourselves. Because of their support, I've grown so much, not just as a student but as a person. I've had opportunities that I never thought I would have. I participate in community events checking glucose and blood pressure levels. I have attended the UNM Night of Heroes and the UNM Nursing Excellence Award. I am part of two internship, Faces for the Future. I love this hospital, where I check patients' vitals and also Future Focus Education at UNM Hospital, which is a paid internship where I schedule appointments. Because of Health Leadership, I am confident standing here today, speaking in front of all of you, and I want future students to have the same opportunities. Thank you so much for letting me be here today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yowali Cruz Gonzalez. Hope I said that right. You have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Thank you for this opportunity. I am Yowali, a student from A school and Leadership School, and I have many things to say about this amazing school. I have many opportunities into my future that this school showed me and have made me try out to see what it is about. This school shows you how the world actually works and how life is. A shows you workforce curriculums and lets you work in the workforce. I have showed a lot of my skills in this school that I couldn't have shown in many other schools. I have been in through many schools, and this school has shown me a lot in life and changed me a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mauricio Hernandez. You have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Hello, I'm Mauricio Hernandez, and I'd just like to say thank you, everybody, for giving me your time. But one thing I'd really like to start about on Aces is we have empowerment about, just in general, let's say, there's something you really want to do, but most schools don't have it. I see a lot of schools struggling in general with their abilities, their compatibles. I don't know how to explain compatibles, but compatibles is like, uh, how do I explain this? It's something like rearrangements. You don't have time for much things. Time is based on life and, you know, just general capabilities. But I feel like with Aces, you have more than just capabilities. You have chances, chances at being a better person and having a bright future. But it adds on you. It totally depends on you if you really want this for yourself, because honestly, no one's really there to help you but Aces. That's what I feel like. As long as I have them with me, I feel like I'm over the world, but so far, it's me and it's myself and I push myself forward. So that's all I like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zoe Rios, followed by Mario Moreno. You have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Hola, mi nombre es Zoe Rios. Estoy en séptimo grado en Christine Duncan Heritage Academy. He's sido parte de la escuela desde tercer grado, y sinceramente se siente como mi segundo hogar. Lo que me más encanta de Christine Duncan es su comunidad de como maestros y estudiantes se apoyan unos a otros para que todos se sientan seguros, respetados y inspirados. In Christine Duncan, our teachers use many ways to make learning fun and easy for everyone. For example, we could do it visually. We do reading and writing, hands-on, we use music, and also do a lot of projects. In Christine Duncan, we also have many amazing opportunities, like our Math Olympics, Geography Bee, our spelling bee, English and Spanish, our Student Council, and also many other sports. I've been challenged to participate in some of these opportunities, and I could proudly say that I won first place in the Math Olympics, second in the Geography Bee, lucky to be in Student Council and won the championships in volleyball. And Christine Duncan has only made me grow as a student, but also my own person because of her motto, "Pass" that reminds us to have a positive attitude, be attentive, make wise decisions, and to show respect to everybody. Y gracias por escucharme y por apoyar nuestra escuela, Christine Duncan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mario Moreno.
Hi, my name is Mario Moreno. I'm a seventh grade student at Christine Duncan Heritage Academy. Yo llegué de El Salvador, y cuando llegué todo fue diferente para mí. Pero desde el primer día que fui a Christine Duncan, me sentí muy apoyado por mis maestros y compañeros y me hicieron sentir que, de que pertenecía ahí. Lo que hace la escuela tan especial es que no solo enseñan, también se preocupan por el bienestar y por la salud de los estudiantes. Y siempre nos siguen motivando con frases como "confía en ti", o "todo esfuerzo tiene su recompensa". En Christine Duncan, tenemos muchas, we have many opportunities, like the Math Olympics, sports team, and the spelling bees, and they help me build more confidence and more discipline. And I'm really proud to be able to represent my school in those things. And thank you for listening and supporting our school.
Thank you. And our next speaker is, I believe it's Mariaticia Fry. Back here. Right here, right here, right here. And you'll have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Blakey, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my experiences as a student of the Native American Community Academy. Gaito, estuchoa, sawi, dimishet, wahinume, mai tetezafrae, shashka, hanutzda, ekzakano, washdisda, oikomestak, oiksou. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mai Tetezafrae. My pronouns are dehi, and I'm of the Big Road Runner Clan and Little Wolf Clan. I've been a student at NACA for six years, and I've recognized NACA is designed for a specific purpose. That purpose is to build strong indigenous leaders who are both academically prepared and secure in their cultural identity. NACA builds relationship and community within its classrooms. From Nakaroc in middle school all the way to indigenous epistemology in high school, our perception of the world as students has been opened up because NACA has made us critically think and dispel ethnocentrism. NACA embraces diversity for students with or without tribal identity, and each one of us will be better prepared to be leaders in the world with our differing views and knowledge from differing backgrounds. NACA has produced two student leaders in my family, my brother and I. We are comfortable onstage playing music or reciting poetry, confident speaking our Caris language with our family or in ceremony, and are comfortable discussing difficult topics with others such as the negative health effects of uranium mining on tribal lands. NACA helped do that. The tribal renewal of NACA should be deeply considered so that all NACA students will grow in an education system surrounded by our school's core values of respect, responsibility, community service, perseverance, culture, and reflection. These core values instilled in NACA students will ensure the future of our communities and will remain secure in our identities.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kiara Ferris, followed by Andrea Cruz Gonzalez. Kiara, oh. You have two minutes.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Blakey. Ya, eh, shae, kier, Elizabeth, three, izin, shesh, kotej, ini, nishla, inak, kaid, ne, bashes, chin, ashih, dasha, che, pas, koyaki, dashan, ne. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for letting us come in today and speak on the charter renewal of my school. Our school's mission, in my own summary, is that we'd all like to benefit our communities in preparing students that go to NACA for adulthood, making sure they know their identity within a strong community that they can lead to a better tomorrow. What we excel at in our community is culture, one of our six core values I've taken to heart. I've been at NACA since first grade, starting off their elementary class with my other peers still currently going to NACA, and now I'm on the course to graduate in two thousand and twenty-eight from my second home. I've grown up in a place where I found I'm not afraid of my culture. Before NACA, I didn't feel welcome amongst my peers yet. I was trying to be someone I wasn't, and even back then, it hurt me to leave my true love from my culture dormant. When my journey started, I was nervous, like any other small children going to a new school. But this school showed me so many amazing things and opportunities. In the course of ten school years, I've learned that I don't have to abandon a part of me. I love to pursue the amazing things in life. NACA truly gave me NACA truly gave me a place of belonging in my culture and spiritual ways, therefore also giving me, giving it a home and nurturing the knowledge of many generations before and now passed down to me. I'm securing a place of my own traditions and ever growing culture while having an amazing education right next to it. I feel the reason NACA should be renewed is to give more kids the same opportunities that I and many others have been given by NACA past present so they can continue to be educated indigenous leaders of their own revived living thriving communities to plant more seeds of respect, responsibility, community, culture, perseverance and reflection to heal what has been taken from our native communities years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Cruz Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Andrea and I'm a senior in Aces Leadership High School. I chose this school because they provided me with their trade program and their hands on learning. Though I started my journey this year, they have provided me with more support and more opportunities than I've ever had. I'm able to learn a new skill in welding and I have, I have an internship in J B Henderson. They haven't only just helped me learn new skills and trade, but they have taught me that I have more potential the more I push towards what I want. They also provide me with certifications like OSHA ten and the certifications that I, and if I put my effort into it, I could come out with the welding certification by the time I graduate. Ever since I came to the school, I genuinely like learned how many things are when, once you graduate and like they push you to learn that you have to put all the effort into it if you really want to have success in your life. And they make sure that even though you fall behind, I've seen in many other kids that even though they fall behind, they give them the support and what they need so they can push towards um their success at the end. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And President Gonzalez, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and thank you to all of our public forum guests. Our next item is to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for the Alice King Community School. Our presenters are Dr. Joseph Escobedo, Senior Director of Charter Schools, Erin Kugler, Governing Council President, and Kristy Collins, Executive Director of Alice King Community School. To begin, I'll ask the Board, do we have a motion and a second to consider this agenda item?
Uh, I will move to approve the renewal contract and performance framework for the Alice King Community School. This is Member Jackson.
This is Crystal, all second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so we will open it up to any discussion and deliberation. Are there any questions around this agenda item?
I do have a few questions.
Member Dominguez.
After hearing um all these wonderful kids present, um a recurring theme was how they felt they belonged. And so it prompted the question that I uh, an obvious question which I overlooked to, to ask. What is the student teacher ratio at the school?
Probably happy to answer that. The currently the student teacher ratio um is, we take into consideration that we have an educational assistant in every classroom. Thus bringing down that ratio quite a bit. We currently have approximately twenty students in every class with a full time general education teacher, a full time educational assistant. And oftentimes there is a special education teacher that pushes in to provide additional support in classroom.
Well, that would make them feel supported for sure. Um, and one other question. Um, what, so in the report, what um I noticed was your mission specific goal was um the multi age classrooms. And so what evidence do you have that supports that that situation um has great impact on academic outcomes?
Our multi age philosophy is the cornerstone of what we do at the school. Um, our current multi age configuration with kindergarten, first grade, second, third grade, fourth, fifth grade, sixth, seventh grade, and then we have seventh, eighth grade. Um, we have seen great, a great impact academically, socially and emotionally with the multi age model. Students have the opportunity to be mentors and leaders. And because it's uh, they loop with the same teacher for more than one year, the teachers are able to work on the academics much sooner, much earlier in the school year. There's less time spent on review material from the prior year. They're able to uh get started with expectations and routines much earlier in the school year because they, they're looping half of their class with them from, from one year to the next. So I think the, the impact of the multi age model is evidenced by our student achievement data and also by the inclusiveness of our program. We have the setup of the, of the program is that all students are met at their level and are given the opportunity to excel based on from where they're at, knowing that their, the goal is very level expectations. Um, our students have a wide variety of backgrounds. It's a wide range of diversity and yet in every single classroom. And specifically for students in special education, they're able to, to be met where they're, where they're at, but also students who are gifted are excelling and that's all happening in a single classroom. And that is because of the multi age philosophy.
And I think that's me, my only question, but I am, I'm just, I'm curious about why um I guess I, I wasn't quite, and this is for the administration, for Dr. Escobedo. Um, I printed the performance framework, but it didn't have information that such as what you just provided. Um, and so I was wondering what so, some of these uh performance framework um documents had lots of information and, and others did not. I guess I, I was trying to get clear about what the purpose was.
So Madam President and Board Member Dominguez, um, I think your questions about their mission specific goals and how they're measuring them. Uh, we are leaving that up to the school to report out individually how they're assessing the looping. Um, and so if you notice in the full um renewal packet, for example, one of one of Christie's reflections is that looping hasn't always been possible. So the goal is setting, they have a mission specific goal of having more than seventy five percent of their students who move. Um, but because of legitarian considerations and other factors, that number was not always met. And so I think um that's just a good reflection of a strong leader and the strong focus that they have on academic achievement and aligning their goals with the districts, I think in general.
Okay. Um, yeah, that it, it would have been helpful, I guess, to understand the purpose of that document. Um, but in terms of your report, um, yes, I, I, I understand. Uh, thank you.
Member Benavides.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. I'm hoping everybody can hear me okay. And thank you to our presenters for being here this evening. Um, my question is um specific to one of the first speakers who spoke about how great uh her experience at Alice King has been. And she did say, and please correct me if I misheard her, but I think she said you all have a four day school week. And if that is the case, I would like to know how you came to that decision because I didn't find it in the documentation, although I might have missed it. Um, how did you come to that decision and how has it been beneficial for the students and to the staff?
Absolutely. Uh, Madam President, members of the Board, um, thank you for asking that question. Um, we had, we were originally chartered in two thousand and six. Um, and at that time, we chartered with the idea of allowing parents to enroll their children in a full time school, but also incorporate elements of homeschooling. And since then, we, we've come away from the, the homeschooling component of it. But um every single time we strategically plan, do anything like that, we've always decided let's keep this four day school week, not because we want to give somebody a day off, but it's an at home learning day. And I can speak from experience, both my kids went through Alice King. And when you really want to connect with your kid and what they're learning and understand what they're learning, um, having that at home learning day with them um really allows you to do it as a parent, caregiver, guardian. And uh, and so we, we just felt it's integral to our charter and um we've, we've never wanted to get rid of it.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I, go ahead.
Member Jackson.
Um, thank you. First of all, I need to say hello to Mr. Kugler. We went to law school together. So nice to see you out there.
Been a while.
It's been a lot, like four years.
Four, four years.
Not very long, yeah. Um, so my question is, um, so on page, uh, let me see sixteen and seventeen of the packet. There's a discussion about the Equity Council and then there's a discussion about how the Equity Council has improved um the outcomes specific to uh some very specific groups. And um recognizing that it's not the Board's responsibility to evaluate the processes that you have, but it's instead to uh evaluate the processes and how they lead to better outcomes. I wonder if you can just speak um at a high level as to how you feel the increased focus on an equity council has led to those specific uh really good increases uh specifically in the groups that are targeted uh within our goals.
Yes, thank you so much, Member Jackson. Um, I the, in implementing an equity council was something that was very important to us and we have been very just very proud of the work that our Equity Council has done. But it's not just the work of the Equity Council, it, it, the work, that work is in tandem with the Governing Council and also the school administration and the school staff. Because equity has become very central to what we do. We believe wholeheartedly in giving students equitable opportunities to both them and their families and really being able to think about students in, in a different way. At Alice King Community School, our student subgroups um have shifted drastically over the last five years. And our very specific Yasi Martinez student populations have somewhat increases best is particularly with students in special education and economically disadvantaged. Our student subgroups in the areas of English learners and our um black students are still fairly small, but they still are very similar to that of the city of Albuquerque. We've, our demographics are very similar to the, to the city in which we're a part of. But the work that we're doing, that the Equity Council is doing is a trickle down effect because that information has been shared with the staff. We've done a lot of professional development in this area and really focusing on those student subgroups and really analyzing the data. We do a lot of work on uh student assessment, analyzing student data and really uh focusing on the different uh student subgroups and how they're performing has really brought an awareness to the teachers so that they are more aware to be able to really support those students individually to help them make the growth that they've made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
I have a finance question if no one else is.
Great, member Dominguez, then we do have member Benavides with her hand up as well. Go ahead.
So, um, and this was an oversight. I should have seen this, but I just want to share, this is half of what we had to go through. And I know you all put a lot of work into your reports. Um, but one of our responsibilities, key responsibilities is financial oversight. And unfortunately, this year we did not receive a, as we have in previous years, a school executive summary uh to include um a report out on categories like direct instruction. Uh, how much money is going to that? What percentage of your overall budget? Uh, and this is not just uh Alice King. It, it's all of you. Um, student support, instructional support, central administration, school administration, and those last two in past years have been notable areas for improvement for some schools. Um, I can't speak to Alice King, but uh I, I just want to make that clear. Um, and so it makes it really difficult for me as an authorizer to, to know. I, I mean, I can't, I can't speak to the financial status. And I don't anticipate, I mean, do you all have that information perchance?
Madam President and Member Dominguez, of the growth of this in the uh renewal application, if you notice on page twenty six, we have several key financial performance indicators and those are really the national standard of how to measure a school's performance. State statute actually limits the oversight that authorizers have over a budget. So when we're talking about individual line items as you're bringing up, that's where we actually have experience with critiquing or asking questions about those line items. And that's really been almost a violation of statute because we, we do not have oversight of the individual line items, but more of the financial performance. And I, and I will share with you that um, that state statute that's referenced um from twenty two eight six one and uh twenty two eight eleven. But we'll share with you the entire text of that for, for you just so that you can understand our growth in the renewal application. But if, once again, if you'll notice on page twenty six and twenty seven, we do have those key performance indicators for all of our schools and really provides you an assessment going back to two thousand nineteen, twenty of their performance.
So I, I see a financial liquidity uh report, a graph uh for the last, since twenty nineteen uh, from twenty nineteen through twen- uh, twenty twenty all the way to twenty twenty three, twenty four. Um, so I'm not quite sure.
Two thousand twenty three, twenty four was the last audited, financial audited um numbers that we have to provide. So we can't. They're currently going over the last fiscal year's audited numbers. So that's of course being done right now. So we're providing you all of these numbers who are actually validated. Audited numbers. So the financial performance indicators. Now there are a year off, but they are, um, they give you a more of historical picture of, in this case, all of the financial performance indicators have been met by the school.
Okay, um, could you explain the, what's meant by total margin, the three year average should be positive?
Yes. So if I may, just a, a point of order, just wanted to reiterate Dr. Escobedo's point about it's not our responsibility to be in that level of detail on the financials. So our responsibility is to ensure that the charter team with an APS has reviewed the documents and is coming forward with the renewal stating, with the recommendation for renewal stating that they're following the law. So that's what we are to review for is are they following the law? And that's essentially where our review needs to stay. So you can ask your question, but I also want to acknowledge that regardless of what the answer is, the, the decision should be made on whether they've submitted the components that are required and there's four articulated reasons for denying a charter. And so we would have to meet that level of um the standard.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm trying to understand then the um the information that you have deemed important for us to have. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I'm just trying to understand it and that's what the question is about. So um, when I look at total margin, could you just quickly explain that? So I know what that means for the others as well.
I'm gonna do my best, but I do have my financial expert with us for real. So um, Ace, Madam President and Member Dominguez, the total margin is the school's deficit or surplus from its total revenues. So how, after it's paying out its expenditures, where are they? Um, and the three year average has to be um a positive. So if you'll notice, they have um a surplus of, at a twelve point three scale, which means that they have twelve point three years, is that correct? Of, of funding available in their reserves. Their total revenue.
Okay. And I gather that's, I mean, it sounds great to me.
It's, it's significant. So if you'll notice that the bar here on page twenty-seven, they've always had a surplus, except in two thousand nineteen, twenty. Was that because of a purchase of a building?
You know, I'm actually not sure because that was before my time.
I think that was the move from Old Town to Uptown that required them to dip into some of their reserves. So it's basically, you know, how are they managing their funds?
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
And that's incredible, by the way. Well above standard.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Benavides.
Thank you, Board President Gonzalez. So I'm going to pivot back to the four-day school week and ask about the Home Learning Day and just, just a few details. Is that a structured learning day? Is it something that the students have a deliverable to? Or is it kind of designed by them and their, their person that they, they live with that helps them throughout that home learning day?
Thank you, Board Member Benavides. So the, how we handle the Home Learning Day is largely through project-based learning. Students have home projects that they do. We have a lot of supports in place for students who are not able to, that may not have the support at home to do those home projects. And so it may be that we're working with the families to get the materials for the students, if that's the situation. If it's a situation where the parents are not available on those home learning days to provide the, the academic support or the support for them to help with research or whatever it is, then accommodations are made for students to be able to do those projects at school with staff support. Students also have the opportunity to do homework on Fridays. We have Friday field trips that are organized, oftentimes by our PTA. We have just different opportunities available for those home learning Fridays. And, and then, of course, if we don't have school, like yesterday, we didn't have school, so we have school this Friday. So then, you know, it shifts. But, you know, for the most part, we do have, it's usually Fridays that we don't have school. And, but we've seen a lot of positive things happen with those home learning days. We, just some really, really amazing projects that are coming in from kids and the ability for them to be able to present those projects, to speak about them, the amount of work that goes into it. It's just, it's truly incredible. And there's, there's just such pride and ownership from the students with, with those, with the work that they do on those, on those home learning days and that what they're able to bring back to the school and share.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right, we do have a motion and a second. So Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Benavides?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Nina Dominguez?
Yes, I just wish we had been better prepared ahead of time for the, the shift in financial reporting. But yes, I think you guys are doing great.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes. So the motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for the Native American Community Academy. We will continue to have Dr. Joseph Escobedo, joined by Andrew Quintana, the Governing Council President, and Zain Rosette, Executive Director for Native American Community Academy. And we have a motion to consider approval of this renewal.
I move to approve the renewal contract and performance framework for Native American Community Academy. This is Board Member Benavides.
I'll second. This is Board Member Dominguez.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. So we'll open up the floor to discussion and questions. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion and a second, so we can move to a roll call vote. Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call, please?
Member Benavides?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yeah.
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes. So that motion carries. Thank you.
Record time. Good job.
We will move on to our next item, which is to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for the New Mexico International School. We have Dr. Joseph Escobedo, joined by John Jones, Governing Council President, and Todd Knos, Executive Director for New Mexico International School. Can we have a motion for approval of this renewal contract?
I move for approval to renew New Mexico International School. This is Member Tapia Romero.
I'll second. This is Member Jackson.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions on this renewal? All right, seeing none, we do have that motion and second. So Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Benavides?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
So Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes. So that motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item four-point-four, which is to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for the Architecture, Construction and Engineering, or ACE Leadership High School. As our presenters, we have Dr. Joseph Escobedo, Senior Director of Charter Schools, along with J.R. Tureen, Governing Council President, and Casey Mason, Executive Director of ACE Leadership High School. And we have a motion to consider this contract renewal.
I move to approve the renewal contract and performance framework for the Architecture, Construction and Engineering Leadership High School. This is Member Jackson.
This is Member Tapia Romero, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or are there any questions?
Yes, I do have questions.
Sorry, Member Dominguez.
Based on some of the presentations from your students. So I wasn't clear in, in the, there's a lot of text rich, the, the report. But how, hold on, let me, I formulated the question on a small sheet of paper as she was speaking. How many internships, such as the welding internship, do you all have given your enrollment?
So all of our seniors are Capstone students, participate in a paid internship. So this year for our paid Capstone internships, we have about seventy-seven. All of our juniors participate in a job shadow rotation internship, and we have about fifty. This is our third year.
Okay. So that's a total of a hundred and twenty-six paid internships, or?
Seniors are the only ones in there.
Okay. And so your, your, your architecture, construction and engineering is your acronym. So what do you have, do you keep track of how many in each of those areas or related industries?
Yes. And that's also part of our goal is to increase the number of internships in our ACE industries. Right now, it's between about thirty-five and forty percent of our students are in internships related to those industries. Not all students are in internships related to the ACE industries, but we would like to increase.
I did notice, however, in academic assessments, math and science scores are really low. And so I'm trying to make sense of, I mean, all those areas are highly technical and reliant on math and science.
So once students come to ACE, the majority of our students come to ACE, they're thirty or younger, with deficit of a full year of credit. So most students spend about two years at ACE students' training. Once they come to us and they're with us for a matter of time, we do see on our internal assessments that their math scores and reading scores have been increased by about two years. So through our hands-on learning, through our project-based learning projects, students are learning math and science by applying math and science, not through a textbook, but by using it to build a wall, framing, or structure. And so through that, we are seeing an increase internally in our growth, in our students' academic scores.
So when you say internally, are you talking about, I'm scrolling to look at what other assessment?
We use Starre Renaissance, we test her three times a year. We start Renaissance, and that's where we see the growth.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? I'm sorry, Member Benavides.
Thank you, Board President Gonzalez. And so my question is specific to, oh, thank you for the presenters for being here this evening. My question is specific to one of the comments made by one of our public speakers, the student who spoke very enthusiastically about how much they enjoy their education there. And what they said was, they mentioned something about empowerments, they're empowered to do things that public schools cannot provide. And I think that this was very specific to working around the student's schedule. So could you go into a little bit of detail, not too much, but a little bit of detail about how you all are able to do that?
So there, there's many different ways that we provide something different at ACE Leadership High School that other schools don't provide. For the senior, specifically, we have all-day Wednesday for them to go and work at this internship that they will be for. So that might be what that student specifically was thinking about. Other ways that we allow students to do things that they couldn't do at other schools is, you know, using power tools, learning how to weld. We had about ten students today getting a certification in how to use a boom lift in our parking lot. So there's a number of ways that students are able to access, access experiences that they wouldn't get at other
Great, thank you. Are there any additional questions?
No, but congratulations on improving your graduation considerably.
Thank you. So we have the motion and second. Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call, please?
I think you might have called my name, and yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes. So the motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item four-point-five, which is to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for Christine Duncan Heritage Academy. As our presenters, we have Dr. Joseph Escobedo, Senior Director of Charter Schools, Ed Monahan, Governing Council Vice President, and Dr. Jesus Moncada, Executive Director of Christine Duncan Heritage Academy. Do we have a motion and a second to consider approval of this renewal contract?
I'll move for approval to approve the contract for Christine Duncan Heritage Academy.
And I'll second. This is Board Member Benavides.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Member Jackson.
Um, this is not a question, but just a recognition. As I was reading through your packet, I just want to say that it was very clear that you took the feedback from two thousand twenty when you were up for renewal. It was very clear to me that you took the feedback that was given to you about the key changes that needed to be made, that you needed to have a plan, that you needed to improve outcomes. And so I just want to tell you that I recognize that as I was reading through your packet, that I think you have definitely strengthened your strategic planning. And so I, I appreciate that you took the feedback and that you took it to heart and that you, it appears as though you are on a better path than maybe you were previously.
Thank you, Member Jackson.
And Board Member, Board President Gonzalez and Board Member Jackson, I just want to emphasize that they were one of our schools that have been in turnaround and our shared accountability. So every time we would go there monthly, at the beginning, there were some really difficult conversations, but we created a culture of data, culture of students first together. And I think, you know, it's not just us, it's not just the school, it's many people who made those parts. But I want to recognize, you know, Dr. Moncada, who was the founder of the school and has been the only principal to take that reflection and implement, I think that's really been great. And the Governing Council with Dr. Monahan and Dr. Medina, and as the leadership, they have really held the school accountable for implementing their own plan. And so I just want to recognize that and thank you for acknowledging.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion and a second. So we can, so can we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Benavides?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes. So the motion carries. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is Agenda Item four-point-six, to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for Health Leadership High School. We still have Dr. Joseph Escobedo, joined by Gilbert Ramirez, Governing Council President, and Dr. Leticia Archuleta, Executive Director of Health Leadership High School. Do we have a motion and a second to consider approval of this renewal contract?
I move that we approve the renewal contract and performance framework for Health Leadership High School. This is Board Member Benavides.
I'll second. This is Member Jackson.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so we can open up the floor to any discussion or questions. Any comments or questions? Yep, Member Jackson.
Thank you. So on page thirteen of the packet that we received, you talk about that in this way standardized assessments provide one lens of measurement, our students' true abilities and achievements are best reflected, et cetera, et cetera, which I think is a great statement. But I would just like to take that a little bit further. How are these assessments measured? And how do you know that you have been successful in those measurements? Because I believe this is, there, there's not a lot of hard data numbers that I can look to in, in your packet. So how do you know that you're successful, that you have met the, the outcomes? And how, and, and as compared to what? Like, just go a little bit further for me.
Absolutely. Board President Gonzalez, members of the board, and thank you for that question. Yes, because I think it's an important question, and it's important in the terms of what we do and why we do it. So yes, we understand that the standardized testing is a priority for our school, and that's a key component to the work that we do and how we strategize and do root cause analysis in our work. But one of the other key components is how we truly assess when students are in internships. When we're moving, when we're moving classroom to community, so that students can really dive into practicum and practicums and real-world world experiences and internships, that's the data that we really look at. So that's through our Capstone projects. We do have a, a system through our project-based learning that we evaluate and assess where they are and where their knowledge acquisition is. That connects our community partnerships. So when we know our teachers may not be a phlebotomist, for example, we will collaborate with a phlebotomist to come into the school, work with our teachers, and the phlebotomist will then become a part of our community partners during exhibitions and showcases of learning, allowing them to experience and understand where the students are in their knowledge acquisition and giving us feedback on that standard. So we do assess that and we evaluate that through our work. We do work with MC Square, and it is a platform that we use, and it's a full database platform to evaluate all of those assessments and their learning.
Just as well. So, so just if I'm understanding, the, you know you're successful because you are using MC Squared, which is providing touchpoints along the way so that you are able to evaluate that growth has occurred, success is happening, that might be outside of the traditional outcomes that me as a traditional board member would more look for. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments? Member Benavides.
Thank you. This is more of a, a comment, and I want to thank the presenters for being here this evening. But I was really, and I was impressed by all the speakers tonight. They were fantastic. So heartwarming to see students excited about their learning opportunities. Specifically to the, to the two students who spoke about the Health Leadership School, I am excited to learn that they are, had, they have aspirations to enter this field because as we all know, our state is suffering with the loss of, of our healthcare practitioners. And so knowing that students have an actual path to this career is, is fantastic and it's much needed. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions?
I do have.
Member Dominguez.
A question, thank you. A question, thank you. Eighty-nine or eighty-seven percent of your student population is Hispanic. What percentage is ELL? If, I mean, last time I visited, I noticed a high number, but that was at the old building. I, I couldn't tell if.
You're over forty percent.
And so how do you? How do you accommodate ELL students? In assessment, but academically?
Madam, I think the members of the board, I'm going to have a question. Board Member Dominguez. We opened our doors for that very reason, for Yasi Martinez and for our students, for our English language learners, because we recognize that what we need in our community, especially connected to the health sector, is students who represent the community. So our work is all around how we engage students to not think about a language that they're coming in with as a hindrance or any, but that should be empowering for them. That's what brings who they are. And so engaging them in practices, and as you heard from our two presenters, they're able to provide services to the community and the community's native language. That is beautiful. So we engage, we, 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 we work to empower students and to inspire them to be in spaces where their language and who they are as ELL learners become a part of who they are and become a part of our work that we do. One of the key things that we recognize is when, when we have students who are English language learners, that brings a different diversity to our school. And when, and we have to meet the needs of our community. So in doing so, there are three things that we, we were highly impacted by. During COVID closures, our students were not able to do volunteer practicums. So we have paid internships and that developed, that was developed then during, during COVID. Our students were working in clinics, the very clinics that they couldn't be seen at because they didn't have healthcare services. We now have a school-based health clinic onsite. When, when mental health, behavioral health services were being closed down across our state, we now have a healing center to provide mental health and support services to our students. So we are all about meeting the needs of our community. So when we have forty percent ELL learners, that's empowerment and that's what we look to and that's how we focus and meet the needs.
Madam Chair Gonzalez, members of the board, Member Dominguez, thank you one for the opportunity. And as I sit as a GC president for this school, I want to give some history. I helped open the school nearly twelve and a half years ago with a vision. I was the director for student support and brought that in. I worked for APS as a licensed school social worker. I'm also a product of APS. I was an ELL kid. And so please understand, I, I was a fact and material witness in Yasi Martinez's case in which I testified to what we developed at Health Leadership High School to support students' all needs, right? And unfortunately, I've been in this, in education for over twenty-three years here. There was a time in which language was brought to the schools and they were filtered into special education. It was seen as a deficit. And that was called out and it was judged. So when we look at accommodations for language, it's more of, we accept the language as a strength and not a deficit. And that is the approach that we take with our young people in our school as an enhance. We know what medical interpreters are paid and we know how much they're needed, especially for our community. So if anything, this data shows that we're targeting the right students with the right skills to put them into the industry profession that they should be in because they come from our community.
So let me, so how, precisely how have you all come up with innovative assessments to highlight those assets?
Madam President and Board Members, we, we've done quite a bit in, in, in the time that we have opened our doors. And innovation is again, it speaks to who our students are. So the innovative practices are not what we do, but how we do it. That is why we are a project-based learning environment, because we understand that that hands-on learning experience allows that elevated prompt to give students a true capacity to showcase their knowledge acquisition as opposed to giving them a test that might be written in English and we're asking a question that they could easily get wrong that we know they understand and know. So innovation truly comes from the foundation and part of our students and our community. And the practices that we implement is how it's designed through our project-based learning model.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions?
Actually, I can't resist. Is it in español? Hablan en español? Las en la presentación en español como, where's the innovation?
In assessment?
Yes, absolutely. So.
The project-based.
Yes. Project-based learning is allowed to be in the student's language, what they're comfortable with. We like for them to be able to engage in spaces where they're naturally confident to be able to expose and show what they're learning and what they know. We have, we've talked about this in, in our application as well. So we have students who are bilingual and in some cases trilingual with ASL. We have over four members of our staff who are fluent in sign language. That is beautiful because again, we're giving them the opportunity to be able to enhance what they know and be able to use their native language. So yes, in Spanish as well as ASL.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? All right, we do have a motion and a second. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
So Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez.
Yes. So that motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our next item, which is to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for Mark Armijo Academy. Our presenters are Dr. Joseph Escobedo, Senior Director of Charter Schools, Melissa Armijo, Governing Council President for Mark Armijo Academy, and Sean Morris, Executive Director for Mark Armijo Academy. Do we have a motion and a second to consider this agenda item?
I will move for approval to accept the renewal from Mark Armijo Academy. This is Member Tapia Romero.
I'll second. This is Board Member Dominguez.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. So the floor is open to any discussion or questions? Member Jackson.
Um, first of all, I don't know who put your packet together. It was amazing. It, I like just the cleanliness of it. It's very clear that somebody put a lot of effort into it. So I just, I just want to highlight that. I don't know who did that, but it, it's.
Joint effort.
Okay, it, it visually pleasing. So thank you for that. Specifically on, let me get to, it's on page fourteen, fifteen of your packet. And let me actually get there as well. Okay, yeah. So what, what I wanted to say is that I, I appreciate the analysis, like the, the deep analysis that you have done with your data. And I'm curious how, the dataset is not very big. Is that correct? There's a, a smaller percentage of students at your school. Is that accurate?
So, uh, Madam President, members of the board, currently we have about two hundred and fifteen students. About ninety-six percent of our students are Hispanic. About forty percent of those students are language learners. We have a, about anywhere ranges in the high thirties, special ed population. Outside of that, yeah, our dataset is for other ethnic groups, our dataset is rather small. And it's sometimes, well, I mean, when we're talking about data, it's not always a good, like if we have, for instance, I believe our, our students that are, are, are black students, there's five. So it's hard to kind of pull on certain ethnic groups because we just don't have the number that would really give us a good dataset and good information from those students.
And so just reading through, reading through your packet, I think this isn't really a question. It's, I think that you have, you have some room to grow. Right? But what I've noticed is that I think you, you've done the analysis, you've looked through the data. I think you recognize where your weak points are, potentially where you have some strengths. And so I, I think I just wanted to, to highlight that more so than quiz you on it. I think, you know, there's room to grow, but we all have room to grow. I mean, APS has goals as well.
Correct. Yeah, correct. And I appreciate that. Our goal is not just to have our students survive, but to thrive. So.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions?
Yes.
Member Dominguez.
So the last time I saw you before us, you were taking on, you guys were reorganizing and you were up to the challenge. And like Board Member Jackson, and I, I mentioned this to you during, well, not the break, but before the, the meeting began. So impressed with the analysis. I, I mean, just, it's clear that you're digging, you're, you're doing that root analysis. Uh, and so despite the challenges that you inherited two or three years ago, I don't remember. You're showing tremendous turnaround. So thank you for the hard work of your team. So what challenges do you face in striving for continued growth in student outcomes? With the, the most vulnerable populations that you have opened your doors to? And by the way, I love that you're in the neighborhood. So that's unique, I think, for a charter school.
So I think one challenge, I mean, we open our doors, we accept any student that comes through the door. Some of our students come to us five or three grade level below. Sometimes that's a challenge when they're coming to us when they're a junior or a senior. So that's definitely one challenge. It, it would, I mean, this is maybe not necessarily a challenge, but an opportunity, an opportunity. And I'll just tell you, tell you a quick story. We had a young man come to us from a traditional high school. He was on track, missing multiple credits, also on probation. Over the next two years at Mark Armijo Academy, he developed strong relationships with staff, participated in service projects at a traditional elementary school, and worked diligently on credit recovery to get back on track. During his senior year, he approached our team expressing a desire to return back to his previous high school and graduate, graduate alongside his peers he had started school with. We assured him of our support, even driving him over to the previous high school to help him reregister. Ultimately, he graduated from that previous high school. For us, the goal was simple, honor his wishes and support him in whatever way he best served, best serves his success. Some students thrive in a traditional environment, others in a charter setting. And I think, I guess my wish there is that there would be some more collaboration between traditional high schools and charter high schools. I think there, we have quite a bit of, of our students that come to us that are three, four, or five grade levels below, sometimes missing multiple credits. I think one of our students came through the door today with five credits and they're eighteen years old. I think if we open up those communication channels, I think we, as, as a team, as a community, could really provide an opportunity for our students to, like I said, thrive and not just survive. Because ultimately, our, our goal is to get both APS Traditional and APS Charter, is to get as many students to that finish line as possible. And to do that, I, I believe in the future, there needs to be a way that we can work side by side and embrace and also work to help each other out. So.
Thank you. That's, I think that's a, that's some, potentially a strategy that we should be incorporating. So thank you so much for your hard work and for the staff's hard work.
Yeah, it's, it's a team effort and without that team, we're, I mean, we're only as strong as that team and that's how we operate.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Member Tapia Romero.
Thank you. I think you all know exactly how I feel about your, your program. I've had the opportunity of working with you all closely for about two years now. And specifically when I look at your graduation rates, when I look at the cohorts and the way they're traveling through all four years and the successes that you're having at Mark Armijo, like you all need to be really, really proud. I, I see the students and what they're doing. I see how they interact with being able to be successful in a job and carry that on outside of high school. And you are all laying in the, the foundation that is crucial. And I, and I wish, again, us at APS could learn a lot of what you're doing at Mark Armijo. So I just want to say, it's no question, but a comment, I love what you all are doing there. Mr. Morris, thank you. Ms. Armijo, thank you for your, what you're doing at your team. And I'm grateful that I've been able to see it firsthand with your students. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the partnership.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion and a second on the table. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez.
Yes. So that motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item four point eight, which is to consider approval of the renewal contract and performance framework for Robert F. Kennedy Charter School. For this agenda item, we have Dr. Joseph Escobedo, Mark Walsh, Governing Council President, and Holly Gurley, Executive Director. Can we have a motion for, consider, a, a motion to consider approval of this renewal contract?
I move to approve the renewal contract and performance framework for Robert F. Kennedy Charter School. This is Member Jackson.
This is Member Tapia Romero. I will second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. So we will move on to discussion and questions. Or is there any discussion or questions related to this contract renewal?
I think I do have.
Seeing the, maybe, seeing one. Member Dominguez?
I don't want to scroll down, open up my computer and wake it up and whatnot. Remind me what your enrollment is?
This year, we're at three twenty.
At three twenty. Okay, um, I can't find it right now, but so what is, what would you say your, your teacher pupil ratio is in, in classes? And I know they're not, well, I'll let you answer that.
Madam President, our, our people to teacher ratio varies between about, it's an average of eighteen students per class. And that's going to be at the high school. And then at the middle school, we have cohorts. And so those vary from thirteen to twenty-five.
And the ethnic, the, the demographic breakdown, would you please remind me of that?
It's majority of Hispanic students.
And students with disabilities?
That's going to be around thirty-six percent and ELL is going to be around twenty-six percent.
And so I know you do a lot of innovative practices. But could you talk about those a little bit more? It, in terms of assessments, creative ways that you're finding to highlight the assets that students that you serve don't necessarily show on traditional assessments?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Blakey, absolutely. I think you, you call this out very specifically because our students are a unique population. And so how do we showcase the work that they're doing? And so we do that through career and technical education where students have a chance to do hands-on activities. They are community partners and our community partners come in and work with us through health fairs and through our capstone projects. We have capstone projects. We also do work-based learning opportunities and internships. We have two students doing a mental health internship this year. And so students have a variety of ways to demonstrate the different things that they're learning, not just through pen and paper assessments. We have an advisory period where students are able to showcase through a digital portfolio, all the work that they've done through ninth through twelfth grade. And really looking at a variety of ways for students to showcase what they're doing.
And how does that, how does that show up in traditional assessments?
I think that's a great question, Member Dominguez. And I think that the things that they're learning do translate.
I think that's a great question, Member Dominguez, and I think that the things that they're learning do translate into traditional assessments and you can see it in the growth that we're making. We are outperforming the state in terms of growth in literacy and science. But you're also going to see that we have very low proficiency rates that we're striving to, to make gains on. So we're making growth. We just need to increase our proficiency.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you. I know that I like to remind people that not all charter schools are equal. And so I really applaud those of you who take on, who welcome students who don't, who need that small alternative approach to, uh, valuing their gifts and drawing those gifts out of them.
Great, thank you. Um, and seeing no other questions or discussion, we do have a motion and a second on the table, so we can move to a roll call vote. Dr. Albright?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez?
Yes. So that motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to Dr. Escobedo and the full charter team for your work on these renewals. Um, so thank you all. We know it's a lot of work, um, and a lot, uh, that we don't see behind the scenes, particularly with the site visits and all the documents. And so just tremendous appreciation for, for your work on this. Uh, with that, we will move to agenda item five, which is where I say that the next Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, November nineteenth at five oh five PM. We're immediately following the Finance Committee meeting here in the Alice and Bruce King Educational Complex at sixty-four hundred Uptown Boulevard, and also livestreamed at APS.edu. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.